Energy circles through. And it was sort of a reminder for me that, you know, we all hold so much in our hearts, so much that we love, that we're passionate about. And that's really what art is about, is you never know what's going to resonate that you have going on within yourself, what's going to resonate with someone else. And it's almost a duty as someone that picks up a creative undertaking, whatever it is, to share this, you know? Like if you have developed a craft, if you have something that you can express yourself with, you know, how else is humanity going to progress out of chaos? And whatever else is haunting us, you know? Like, we need people that have a song in their heart to sing that song. And that moment really kind of, you know, whenever I struggle with anything, I think back to that. And it gives me a resurgence of energy and dedication to keep moving forward. Thanks for watching this episode of Oregon Life.
For watching this episode of Oregon Life.
Thanks for watching this episode.
Episode of Oregon Life.
Oh, man. I can't believe I'm missing this. Okay, Grandma.
Don't get stuck at home with the flu. A flu shot is the best way to prevent the flu and its potentially serious complications. It keeps you, your community, and loved ones protected. Don't get flu FOMO. Learn more at GetMyFluShot.org.
Now it's 5 o'clock.
It's 5 o'clock. We'll call a meeting in order, please.
Bayno?
Here.
Mar?
Here.
Meyer? Majewski? Molson?
Here.
Holda?
Here.
Schnelly?
Here.
Smithback?
Here.
And Van Campen?
Here.
Thank you. Thank you. Move on. We're going to go to item 3, verification. Oh, sorry. Village Board.
We'll call the order of the Village Board, please.
Beshin?
Here.
Kurt Storfer?
Here.
Manke?
Here.
McDaniel?
Here.
Peterson?
Here.
And Van Campen?
Here.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on then to item number 3, which is verification of proper legal notice. Is that yours?
Yes, the public hearing was noticed in the late November observers.
Okay, fine, thank you. Presentation by VanderWollen Associates on the proposed 2023 comprehensive plan and proposal, or proposed 2023 park and recreation plan. There will be two public hearings following this held separately. Go ahead.
Thanks. I've explained to staff, I don't have a lot of detailed content to go through tonight. We are at the end of the process. So just as a reminder, we were here about a year ago, last December, to start this process. And we had the goal to finish by the end of this year. So congrats to all of you and all of the committees. And thanks to staff and all the detailed comments that we got throughout this process. Everyone was really timely and people showed up to all of our public events to make this happen. So we are here at the adoption night. I think the last time we were before you was just before the open house. So just a brief update on that. The open house occurred in late October. And as I explained to the Park Board last week, the night was a little bit questionable. I think it was stormy and we didn't have a lot of people there right at the start time. But right when we started at 6 o'clock, we did end up having a good turnout for that event as well. And I think it went well. A lot of good comments and conversations. There were a few things that led to direct changes within the plan document themselves. But overall, what we heard from the open house was some nods of understanding and support of what we had in there. So just wanted to kind of give you the most recent event. And then since then, we've been going through that public comment period before we got here tonight to the public hearing. If anything, I'll just focus on maybe one more slide down, tonight's steps. So I do have things that we can refer to if there are any questions. But just the goals of tonight. So there is the public hearing. This is a required step in the statutes before adopting or amending a comprehensive plan. We, just again, kind of following the outline of the agenda, hear those public comments, review any written comments that were received, have discussion from the board and the Plan Commission. And then there's a series of actions that can be taken. So the Plan Commission would vote on the plans by resolution. Those are listed there. First, the comp plan, then the park plan. And then the Village Board adopts by ordinance for the comp plan and resolution for the park plan. And then after that, the Plan Commission would adjourn before going into your regular Village Board meeting. So I think I'll kind of stop there and just see if there are questions. And if we want a little bit more of an overview, we can do that. But we have kind of been here a number of times with the same content now for the last few months, so.
That's it? Go to the public hearing?
I guess not, Sonja.
Okay.
All right, no comments. We'll move on then. Okay, at this time, the open public hearing regarding the proposed 2023 comprehensive plan is open to the public at this time. For the public, you're welcome. Now, I have a couple of people here. The one person wants to speak for the comprehensive plan. The requirements are, the stipulations are, you have three minutes to discuss, and then we will respond at the appropriate time. First item was, the first person was. No, it's the comprehensive plan. Shelby Deegan, do you want to speak? And I'm sorry, come up to the, you come up to the speakers right here, yes, the micros, excuse me. Give us your name. I have your address, but I'll give you your address for everybody.
Yes, 241 Janesville Street. Right. Yeah, so I am coming to you all to speak today about a few policies within the comprehensive plan. So first, on page 34, Policy 2, proposed by the plan. This includes language regarding rezoning our property, which is 241 Janesville Street, currently zoned as an R1 residential, single-family residence, to either become multifamily or two-family. So in my research, this is something that's usually initiated by the property owner and not the governing body. So for example, a property owner may decide they'd like to sell their land to a developer, then may approach the governing body for a rezoning request. So though myself, I'm not super familiar with real estate. From those in real estate and law that I've consulted about this, they haven't heard of rezoning requests initiated by like a Village Board instead of the property owner himself. Because we do not have any plans or desire to sell or have our property used for any other purpose than a single-family residence. So as such, oh, yes, I covered that already. So given that information, it's really important to us that our single-family residents and other residents, single-family residences be included in the central mixed-use area, referencing pages 46 and 54. So if our property is rezoned to two-family or multifamily per this comprehensive plan, it could be very difficult to sell our home for a fair price in the future. And our property and the single-family residence south of ours, so directly to our right, if you're looking at our house from the front, should be moved out of the central mixed-use or purple district and should be continued to be zoned as an R1, single-family residence. So the homes right now are owner-occupied. They're in excellent condition. And they're in the historic style that's in line with the village's plan to maintain the small historic feel of the downtown. So when we bought our home, we just bought our home in March of 2023, we weren't made aware of any plans to develop our property, the property south of ours, or anywhere around ours, nor any mention of rezoning our property. So we are concerned and we think it's appropriate that since these are well-maintained single-family residences, that they are zoned as such. So we'd like to keep them zoned as R1 and have that be reflected in the plan.
Thank you. Elizabeth, please give us your name and your address. I'm sorry.
Handouts?
Okay, remind you again, we have three minutes is what we have.
Hi, I'm Elizabeth Freeh, and I'm at 319 Janesville Street. And I would just like to say that with the current comprehensive plan, the strategy summary says, which I think is really good, is that we should ensure new development is high-quality and matches the established aesthetic design preferences of the community. Also, the strategy summary in the current plan says that the village will try to integrate traditional neighborhood design and mixed-use development in both development and redevelopment. Also, the goals and policies are to preserve and enhance Oregon's unique features that contribute to its small-town community character. I think this is first and foremost in many of the people's minds of the current neighborhood that in which I live. The zoning map, when enlarged, include the area, this Janes Street area, includes a number of single-family residences. And Shelby has very articulate, articulated very well that it would be impacted quite a bit with mixed-use development if the particular, if the particular points in the comprehensive plan aren't followed to include the small-town feel that we already have. So with that said, it's hoped that the village will take positive steps to reduce the impact on our single-family homes. There are about 12 of them and within this central mixed-use district. And it's hoped that, that in the future, that this comprehensive plan will include density transitions, limit the height of new buildings, and also require appropriate setbacks, legislative screenings, and sideyard buffers. And also to fully evaluate traffic and parking implications. There's a lot of traffic in this area. And hopefully, considering that section of the comprehensive plan for mixed-use development, it's hoped that those final points will be considered. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Doran, or Doran?
I have some visuals as well, but I think they're all on here. So you can probably just look at this.
You want the paper or what?
The clerk of courts tonight.
Michael Doran, 319 Janesville Street. So I just am concerned again about the single-family homes and maintaining sort of the historic, small-town feel of the community. And I have some suggested modifications to the document that would help deliver that goal. So on the second page, it's page 77 of the plan. I would add one last item, number five. Recognize the aesthetic and historic value of traditional period homes and foster their retention in the community. And then the next one is on page 34. And this is in response to Shelby's concern, I guess. And that has to do with amending the village ordinance. It's unclear to me what's meant here by point number two. Amend the village zoning ordinance to be consistent with the plan. If that's to be done immediately, if that's to be done at property owner's request in the future, or whatever. But if it's to be done immediately, I would suggest striking it so we don't have the absurdity of 12 single-family residences with the improper zoning. On the next page, I would add item number nine. It's over on the right-hand column. And this is policies for the central mixed-use zone. Recognize that single-family homeownership isn't allowed use within the district and protect the interests of single-family homeowners by requiring compatibility steps in the development of adjacent property. And the next page is page 50. And again, I'd add a final point. Protect period homes in the central district from adverse impacts of adjacent development. On page 54, another bullet. This page would indicate the different uses that would take place within the mixed-use central area. And I would add single-family residential to that list because it is absent. There are 12 of them there. And then lastly, this is an image of a multifamily development. I like it. I like it a lot. But I think it would be strengthened if we added the bullet that's over in the right-hand column, referring to buffer yards of adequate width and height reflecting adjacent single-family. That's like the facade rhythm bullet that's down at the bottom of that image. So that's all I have for you. Again, I'm concerned about these dozen, single-family homes. There's probably another dozen that are right on the edge. And how is this going to impact them in the future if we start developing that area? Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the public that would like to speak? Anybody else have any comments, questions from the board? Okay, we'll close the public hearing at this time. Move on to item 6. Public hearing regarding the proposed 2023 park and recreation plan. At this time, we'll open a public hearing. We have one individual. Ms. Susan Shadavi would like to speak to this. Please come forward.
My name is Susan Shadavi. I live at 1860 County Road MM Fitchburg. I wanted to speak just very briefly about the parkland at 249 North Main Street in Oregon. I believe that the Village of Oregon voted to approve an RFP by North Point that includes a 3/4 acre park at 249 North Main Street. And I believe that that was a legal decision by the Village Board to accept that RFP. There's been some discussion or some talk about making that land into a much smaller park, possibly a pocket park. And I believe that unless the Village Board would have a new vote on that decision, I think the RFP that was approved by North Point with a 3/4 acre park, that is a legal decision. So I don't know that the Village Board can legally just change that decision without going for a new vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else regarding the park plan? Nobody else? Let's quick, we'll close the public hearing. Move on. Review any written comments submitted by the members of the public, which we have done at this point. There's no other comments from anybody? Is that correct? Okay. Let's go talk about the comprehensive plan, Plan Commission members and the Village Board. Open up the discussion. Now it's quiet. Yes, Amanda?
I was just going to see if there's somebody, maybe this is Elise or something, to kind of, I don't know, explain the difference in the, you know, future use, you know, how these properties of the people who came before us, like why they were changed and how, what that means, really.
Yep. I'll take a first crack at it. And Jeff, if you want to go to slide 20, that at least gives us a map to look at. Thanks.
Want to zoom in on this area?
Yep. So I believe the comments were from Janesville Street in that vicinity where the darker red meets that single-family area. Yep, being circled. So that darker-red maroon color is central mixed-use CMU. And the yellow is single-family residential. This is a future land use map. So this indicates the recommended future condition when redevelopment occurs. It does not do anything to change the zoning rights of those properties that are there today. So whatever zoning district is there now will continue to be there even if this comprehensive plan is adopted in this form. Zoning decisions would be made after that. And as the residents stated, those are usually guided by the property owner. Statute does allow for other people to petition or the local government to petition for a zoning change, but that rarely happens. Point being that this, again, does not change the zoning of those properties. What it does do is enable a future rezoning request to occur. So in this instance, if those property owners did decide to sell or subsequent owners of those properties wanted to sell, this enables them to pursue zoning that's consistent with CMU. Another important point is that it does not obligate the board to approve such a zoning decision. So if something did come forward, a development proposal, and it was evaluated on all of the good points that were made in the public comments, so things like buffers, screening, appropriateness to nearby development, if the Plan Commission and the Board found that those site plans were not consistent or had issues, they would be able to work through those through the site plan and zoning process, make changes, approve it, or deny it. So again, this enables a future recommended condition. I think I'll just also add that these CMU parcels, as shown, are not necessarily, they are not a new addition in this version of the comprehensive plan. They did exist with that land use criteria in the most recent version before this update process.
I think the only other thing I would add is that, in kind of short to what Sonia said so well, single-family homes in this area would be able to continue to act as single-family homes, do additions, ask for building permits for sheds and fences and all the normal things that are allowed for single-family homes. I think the message that we've said in the past plan when these properties were added to CMU and then, you know, continue to be, is that with redevelopment, we don't foresee additional, you know, single-family homes or more single-family homes going in this area, but that would be focused in other areas of the village.
Thank you. There was something, I think, that some of the audience may have been interested in knowing, that just because you have this plan doesn't mean that the village or somebody else is going to come in and rezone it. The request has to come from the landowner. Okay? Anybody else have any questions?
Elise, can you expand upon what we talked about at the last Plan Commission meeting about getting a more local plan for the downtown area and how that would help this district as well?
Yes, that's actually coming up later on our agenda tonight. But as we talked about at our Planning Commission meetings and then tonight, we'll talk about again with the Board, we are planning a downtown master plan in 2024 that will focus on this area as well as kind of the larger downtown. But it'll address a lot of the concerns about, you know, transition between historic properties and new developments, pedestrian, bike, safety, vehicular access, property preservation, you know, how these public properties and private properties kind of work together downtown. So we are planning on hopefully getting that RFP on the street in January and probably getting that work underway in the springtime. It'll probably run spring through fall. So there will be a lot more opportunities to dig into kind of the meat and potatoes of what downtown will look like. And I anticipate there might be some recommendations from that plan that may end up, we may end up with some comp plan changes maybe later. with some comp plan changes maybe later next year based on some of the feedback and recommendations from that downtown plan.
Good. Anybody else have any questions? Go ahead, Amanda. You need some involvement here.
I'm just trying to make sure people are, you know, understanding.
Good, thank you.
Did you guys have a chance to look at what Mr. Dorian handed out at all and some of the suggested changes that he had? Do you have any thoughts about benefits or drawbacks to adding that type of language?
I did briefly earlier today, just received them this morning, and Sonia just saw them just now. So that's something we could definitely take a look at and see, you know, if the board is comfortable kind of giving us a little flexibility in something that might be more of a clerical-type addition or, you know, correcting a typo or adding clarification. I think, you know, I'm comfortable with kind of letting us just kind of fine-tune that final, final draft before we get that up on the website and everything, but I think some of the issues he raised were more policy discussions that it might be better dove into during that downtown master planning process. And again, I think there will be other, we have typically, hopefully we have less updates, comp plan updates that we do in the future. That's why we made a lot of these changes is to allow some more flexibility for different kinds of housing and hopefully reduce paperwork and process for everybody. But I think that's something, again, if there's discussion that we want to kind of dive in to get to together and we all agree that those would be good changes to the comp plan, we can certainly, you know, open it up at any time, but I wouldn't want to jump to any, you know, policy level type changes at this point without having further discussion with these two bodies.
Thanks for asking that question. I'm glad you asked.
I have no, I'm not a follow-up necessarily with this, but I was, want to make sure that Susan Chetavi's point, the three-quarter size, three-quarter acre park, is that, did that change in this park plan at all, or is that still?
No, so one recent change to the park plan, I will say about a month ago, we did add in that general vicinity, planned future pocket park, pocket park three, if you see on the plan, to serve that kind of North Main Street service gap area. Pocket parks don't have a limit in size, so the next level up is a neighborhood park, and that's typically five acres or more, so a pocket park is essentially five acres or less. So that's still the plan, you know, in terms with North Point moving forward, once those site plans get approved, we still have to divide the property between the parkland and the developer, and I know that purchase and sale agreements on our agenda also later tonight, lots of things. So that's still the plan to keep it at that three-quarter acre, but again, the pocket park name doesn't have any, you know, other than kind of that rein, if it's larger than five acres, it would be classified as a neighborhood park, but there's been no effort to reduce the size of that since the RFP was seen.
Thank you for explaining that way better than I could.
Anybody else? We'll move on then to discussion of the park plan, which is, that's okay.
Good segue, Amanda.
Yeah, sorry. You were on a roll. Discussion proposed 2023 park and recreation plan by the Plan Commission and the village board. We've covered part of it already. Yes, Amanda?
I just wanted to thank you. I, Elise and I emailed it this morning. We have, had received a couple of edits from the Friends of the Sculpture Garden Group for the park plan, and in our discussion, sounds like that is all going to be pretty okay as far as making some of those changes and edits for them. So just wanted to update everybody that Sonia and Elise did some good work to kind of make some of those changes for us.
Thank you.
And well, yeah, they have, they weren't in the version of the plan that you see before you tonight, just in case there was any other changes. We didn't want to keep reopening kind of final draft, this is the final one, 2.0. Have lots of versions flying out there, so those, if you all are okay with those, I think they've been forwarded to the Park Board, Planning Commission, the board saw them as well. I think they were all just points of clarification and just some language about keeping language consistent between pocket parks, mini parks, tot lots, things like that. So I think we're okay with those changes, if you guys are as well.
Okay, great. Thank you. Nothing else? We're gonna move on to item number 10, the Plan Commission action. This is resolution number 23-06, recommend to the adoptance of the 2023 Village of Oregon Comprehensive Plan, based on staff recommendations and motion to approve as presented.
Can I ask a procedural question?
Absolutely.
I'm just wondering, when we approve this, do we have to put in, you know, like when we make a motion, do we have to say approved with allowing staff to make their little changes like we talked about, just, I don't know, how do we want to work this?
I love it because actually it's gonna be you're doing it, we're not doing it. All we're doing is recommending to you.
Oh, okay, sorry, sorry. I'm ahead of it.
Amanda, I think that's a great idea.
Yeah, it is.
Because purely, I'm always nervous about this slippery slope, about, we've gone through multiple public opportunities for people to speak. We have given multiple chances for people to put feedback in, and now in this, not even 11,000 or 1150, we're getting a whole bunch of sort of feedback on things. And I think that most of them come from a place of well-intention or good intention, but I think that there has been a chance for that, and if we allow this sort of opportunity to change the final, final 2.0, whatever you want to call it, document, it sets up a precedent for the slippery slope to happen. We've already know that there's going to have to be an update to the comprehensive plan in a year, possibly less, because of what we're going to be doing in the downtown area. I think other than sort of edits to grammar and punctuation and those types of things, my personal opinion is I'd like to keep those things out until we come back with another edit that everybody has a chance to look at. That's, that's me.
So that'd be the spirit of our motion, probably. Yes.
I was just gonna say, I think that makes a lot of sense, especially because we're going to be doing the downtown master plan very shortly, and some of the things that we're talking about, most of the things that we're talking about in both plans will be impacted by that.
Correct. Thank you. Okay? Nothing else? Then we need a motion.
I will make a motion to approve the comprehensive plan contingent upon changes being made that are grammatical in nature.
That's resolution number 23-06. That's a resolution.
That's like he said.
Yep. We have a motion. Do we have a second from the Plan Commission?
I'll second that.
We have a second by Patrick. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Move on to the Plan Commission action. This is resolution number 23-07, recommend the adoption of the 2023 park and recreation plan. Hard to say. Go ahead. Do we have a motion to effect?
I'll make a motion contingent upon only changes being made are grammatical in nature.
Thank you. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Martin. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Go to the village board.
Okay, item 12, village board action only, ordinance number 23-14, adopting the 2023 Village of Oregon Comprehensive Plan. Recommendation from the Planning Commission and staff is to move as presented. Jason?
I'll go ahead and move the plan with, open for grammatical edits by the staff.
Okay. Second, by Carleen. Hearing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 13, village board action only, resolution number 23-52, adopting the 2023 Village of Oregon Park and Recreation Plan, staff recommendation and planning recommendation, motion to approve as presented. Motion by Amanda. Second by Jason. Discussion. Comments? Carleen?
Just gonna put the comment out there that the master plan for the downtown will be happening in the next year, and for those people who have concerns that brought them tonight, I suggest getting involved in that process early on so that you know what the process is going to be as it occurs to, you know, impact zoning as well as 249 North Main.
Anyone else? I just want to thank Elise and Martin and rest of the village staff and the Planning Commission who put a lot of time into this, as well as Sonia and Ben and staff at Vandywall. Something that we're really not spending a lot of time on tonight represents a tremendous amount of work by people I mentioned and others, and I want, just want to mention my appreciation, and I'm sure the board as well. So we have a motion, a second for the discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Moving on.
Thanks for all, thanks for all your time.
Thank you.
Plan Commission, do we have a motion to adjourn?
No move.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you for the time.
Thanks, Planning Commission.
Happy to be here.
Way to be agreeable. Way to be agreeable. Should I give him a minute?
Yeah, we're gonna.
People shift here, yeah, okay. Thanks, John.
Thank you.
Thanks, Greg. Oh, yeah. You can stay if you want. Oh, boy. Please say.
I mean, that thing, the machine goes like all the time.
Yeah, custom.
I could see that.
It's like airplanes, you can't turn them off.
Yeah. Much harder. First of all, if I got sick, you don't have to be, let's be honest. 100%.
I would guess.
Jason.
I can. Why don't we just push it over and put your feet up?
I'll clean up.
Should I wait for Jeff, huh?
I'll be the bomb. Yeah, let's wait. Someone's gotta be. Yeah. That would be, that would be. Yeah. Oh. I can print some. Yep.
I don't need mine anymore.
I have an extra here.
Mine's all marked up.
I don't want you to save it. I don't think we've ever ran out of a journal. Mm-hmm.
But I can, we can get started, and then I can, I can do it.
Go ahead.
Yep.
Okay, resuming the village board meeting. Item 15, approval of December 4, 2023 village board meeting minutes. Looking for a motion to approve or changes, corrections. Carleen, motion? And Amanda? For the discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item 16, public appearances, comments, and communications. A public comment. This part of the agenda allows members of the public to provide information to the village board, including items both on and off the agenda. Under the open meetings law, this agenda item allows the board to receive information and ask questions of representative, facilitate a better understanding of the information. Board members may discuss procedural matters relating to the information, such as whether the information should be directed to staff, referred to a committee, or placed on a future board agenda. However, board members may not expand their discussion beyond such procedural matters. Fifteen minutes will be provided for this item with a three-minute maximum per speaker. Otherwise, the agenda will proceed as posted. Please note, this section is for public comments for items both on and off the agenda. However, we will be having a public hearing on the sidewalk assessments later in the meeting. I think some of you may have signed up to speak in that part. You can certainly speak now or at the public hearing section at that time. With that said, anyone here for public comments? Please.
I'm just the sidewalk.
I know.
That's later.
It's later, yes. Mm-hmm. Anybody else? Public comments? Seeing none, thank you. Sorry?
That's on the sidewalk.
We'll have a separate, separate public hearing for the sidewalk assessment, John.
What I want to know, first.
Wait a minute now. You want to come up? You can do your comment now if you'd like, John.
Sure. I don't know what I was asking about.
Could you give us your name and address? Sorry.
Okay, it's John Brown.
Pull the mic closer, please.
John Brown. I own a piece of property at 457 Janesville Street, and what I was after is that in 2019, I went and got permission from the city to put in 25 feet of the new sidewalk, and it cost me $1,475 to have a contractor come in and do it. And if I knew they were going to put new sidewalks in in 2023, I would have never put those sidewalks in. And what I would, what I'm asking for, if it cost the assessment is $1,730.53, I was asking if I could get a credit for the $1,475 because it were only in for four years instead of paying the full amount, which the difference is $255.53, because if I knew at that time, I would have never spent that money to put those sidewalks in.
Okay.
And I give you a thing on it, so that's, that's all, that's what I have to say on it, and, and thanks for letting me talk.
Okay, thank you, John. Anyone else for public comments? Okay. Item 17, approval of vouchers in the amount of $905,196.38. Motion to approve as presented. Tom? And Jason? Comments or questions? Hearing none, so roll call vote?
Van Campen?
Yes.
Kirchdorfer?
Yes.
Beshin?
Yes.
Manke?
Yes.
McDaniel?
Yes.
And Peterson?
Yes.
Thank you. Item 18, consent to agenda. Motion to approve consent agenda as presented, all of 18A through 18N. Comments, questions? Looking for a motion to approve. Tom? Carleen? Yeah. Questions, comments? Amanda?
I, I just have a really quick comment on the, I think it's in here. Now I'm not seeing it, but the, the approval of the electors for, for this 2024 to 25 session, I just want to state publicly for the record that, you know...
Wait a minute now, uh, you wanna come up? You can do your comment now if you'd like, John.
I, uh, I don't know what I was asking about.
Could you give us, uh, your na- name and address, sorry?
Okay, uh, it's, uh, John Brown.
Pull the mic closer, please.
John Brown, I own a piece of property at, uh, four fifty-seven Janesville Street. And what I was after is that in two thousand nineteen, I went and got permission from the city to put in twenty-five feet of the new sidewalk. And it, it cost me fourteen hundred and seventy-five dollars to have a contractor come in and do it. And if I knew they were gonna put new sidewalks in in two thousand twenty-three, I would have never put those sidewalks in. And what I would, what I was asking for, if it cost, uh, the, uh, assessment is, uh, seventeen hundred and thirty dollars and fifty-three cents, uh, I was asking if I could get a credit for the fourteen seventy-five because it were only in for four years instead of paying the full amount, which the difference is two, uh, two hundred and fifty-five dollars and fifty-three cents. Because if I knew at that time, I would have never spent that money to put those sidewalks in.
Okay.
And I, I, I give you a, a thing on it, so that's, that's all, that's what I have to say on it. And, and thanks for letting me talk.
Okay, thank you, John. Anyone else for a public comment? Okay. Item seventeen, uh, approval of vouchers in the amount of nine hundred and five thousand, one hundred and ninety-six dollars and thirty-eight cents. Motion to approve as presented, uh, Tom. And Jason. Comments or questions? Hearing on, so, uh, roll call vote?
Van Campen?
Yes.
Kirchdorfer?
Yes.
Beshin?
Yes.
Manke?
Yes.
McDaniel?
Yes.
And Peterson?
Yes.
Thank you. Item eighteen, consent to agenda. Motion to approve consent agenda as, as presented, all of eighteen A through eight, eighteen N. Comments, questions? Looking for a motion to approve? Tom? Uh, Karleen? Yeah. Questions, comments? Amanda?
I, I just have a really quick comment, um, on the, uh, I think it's in here. Now I'm not seeing it, but the, uh, the approval of the electors for, for this, uh, twenty twenty-four to twenty-five session, I just want to state publicly for the record that, uh, you know, anybody who's on the ballot cannot serve in those elections. And since I will be on the ballot this spring, I will not be serving in the spring elections. But my name is on the list because I'm a poll worker in the fall and other elections where I'm not on the ballot, just for clarity. Thanks.
Okay, anybody else?
Just one question on the, uh, excuse me, the West Star.
Yeah, on the truck.
Just, will there be a, the, so the nineteen ninety-six truck, will that be salvaged out, or what will we do with that?
So, so we will send that truck to the auction, and, um, you know, the auctions are funny. Uh, sometimes we've cut great amounts back. Any auction funds go back into our equipment fund and help fund either defray the cost or help fund additional unexpected equipment repairs.
So it will not, it's not a additional truck as strictly a replacement of a?
Yes, yes, these are replacement trucks, correct.
Anybody else? Lynn?
I just, I have one question about the change order. Um, I think I'm just not able to read this appropriately because I, so in the past change orders that we've had, at the bottom, it tells us that it's like been covered by, um, the fund that you have for expenses you're not prepared for. Do you know what I'm saying? And the bottom of this one doesn't say that, but I think it says it in step, in point one, where it says, uh, these costs are generally offset by savings elsewhere in the project. I guess I'm just asking for a clarification that this change order is getting covered by that contingency account as well, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you, sorry.
Not at all.
Anyone else? I just mentioned quickly, uh, that Nicholas, uh, Rulat, Roddy? Pronounce that name. Here, by any chance tonight? Uh, he's a student member, um, it's for appointing to the park board, so I'm, I'm glad to see that we're able to fill that position. Any further discussion? Hearing on, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries, thank you. Item nineteen, reports of committees, items for discussion and or possible action. A, one, conditionally used permit and agree, an agreement for seven eighty-seven North Main Street, Suite one oh five, to allow indoor commercial entertainment in the planned business zoning district. The planning commission and staff recommendation, motion to approve. Do you have anything else, Elise, or, I know it's pretty detailed in the memo, but?
Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Okay, we get a motion, please. Amanda? And, uh, Tom? All those in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Pose, motion carries, thank you. Item nineteen-two, request for the proposal for downtown master plan, uh, included in the packet. Uh, commission and staff recommendation, motion to approve as presented. Is this, uh, Elise, please?
Just a couple of, uh, notes here. So at our last planning commission meeting about two weeks ago, they did review this as well, and there were, um, two changes that were made since then, just based on their recommendations. One was the map for downtown. The area was just expanded a little bit to include, um, Kaiser Park and kind of the pool area as well. So those, those parcels, portions of those parcels there, um, they just felt like with the kind of event planning, um, public space, recreation type, um, focus, that those areas would be worthwhile to include as well. And obviously, this area isn't, um, it's not set in stone. So if there are other, you know, properties and kind of connections to other properties, other areas of town, I imagine that will be a big part of the discussion. We're not necessarily bound by these, um, limits, but more just to give a sense for somebody who might be replying to this RFP that maybe hasn't been to Oregon, just what size of an area are we talking about? So when they're responding and giving us pricing and stuff, we're talking about this is about a forty, forty-five acre area. We're not talking about, you know, a major downtown, like downtown Madison or something. So more just to kind of give a scale. The other note that was added was in, the scope of services, um, but just a request to kind of add, um, architectural design guidelines, so a lot of what, um, some of the comments on Janesville Street, we're talking about, the transition between historic and, um, new developments, kind of architecturally how things should be, kind of having a consistent vision for the look and feel of downtown, both old and new. So just making sure that was spelled out as something that we want to have as a deliverable. But the schedule's in here, um, and yeah, Martin and I worked on this together. So happy to answer any questions that you would have. And if you're in support, we'll get this, um, published in kind of all of our usual places. Maybe some additional ones, just to kind of reach far and wide here, um, at the beginning of the year.
Okay, let's get, start with a motion on this. Item adjacent, and, uh, Karleen? Questions, comments?
I'm just glad that you added those things, especially about the transitional between historic and new development. I think that's really important, uh, thing to, to specify.
Lynn?
Just in light of some of the discussion that we've had earlier this evening, could you help pinpoint when and where in this process, public input? We, you know, we've talked about this quite a bit, it's a big part of this. It's, I'm looking at section three, that planned schedule of the RFP. Where might that public input sit in that schedule in comparison to this RFP plan?
Yeah, so, um, after, for sure, obviously, um. I would say, you know, we'll have a more detailed schedule once we get a firm on board. And so they'll, they'll kind of present their, obviously, scope. And then once we get contract approval, we'll work with them to create kind of a project schedule. So I can't give any specifics yet. I would say typically, public participation is towards the beginning of the plan. So I would anticipate probably late spring through early summer to be kind of the bulk of our public participation, similar to, um, how we did our comp plan process this year. Just it'll be a little bit more focused and, and hopefully won't drought a full year. But yeah, they'll be, and we'll, you know, make sure that's widely, um, publicized, all those different opportunities. But yeah, kind of late spring, early summer, I would say, to at least get that kicked off.
Thanks for that clarification.
I just, I.
Please.
So this is what, what we're voting on tonight is just the plan to find someone to help us create the plan. So there's a lot of input, a lot of, we, we don't even have definition as to what the plan for input will be yet. It's, it's just, we're just approving to find someone to help us with this process.
That's correct.
Right, we're essentially saying, this is the area you want to have studied, these are the problems that we know exist. This is what we'd like to find out at the end of the day. Tell us how you would do this for us, and how long would it take, and how much would it cost, and why are you qualified? And, um, kind of go through our, our normal selection process for professional services with this.
Anyone else? Okay, we have a motion in a second, all those in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Pose, motion carries, thank you. Item twenty, unfinished business. There's a lot.
End of the year, we're cleaning up.
A, amendment to the twenty twenty-three Janesville Street, State Street, Sterling Drive, Union Street, Washington Street, and K Court Street Improvement Special Project Special Assessments. First, I'll open the public hearing. Any comments for staff before I, uh, do public comments? No? Thank you. Item one, uh, members of the public may present comments to the village board related to the topic at hand. A time limit of three minutes per speaker is set. I have a, uh, Michael Lewis, uh, registered to speak. Please state your name and address for the record, sir?
Michael Lewis, one four six Washington Street. I'm not here to, uh, disagree with the special assessment. What I'm here is to ask for damages to personal property. We had a planner, uh, flower part for about three feet back. I had Lauren over there twice, and I had the engineer representative over there. I said, don't fill it, don't touch it, don't do anything, I'll take care of it. Seems that the concrete guys decided to use it as a garbage dump, poured the excess concrete in there. The landscapers came over and threw dirt on top of it. Threw more dork, dirt over it, seeded it, and threw straw over it. Now, I spent the better part of three years getting all the quack and crap out of that. We have probably a hundred and thirty to a hundred and fifty dollars worth of bulbs in there. I asked, can I at least dig the bulbs up? And both Lauren and the engineer representatives said, don't touch it. This is gonna be on the punch list, that sort of thing. I don't have any information how I can address this from. That's what I'm here for, basically.
Okay.
The steps they put in, which were on our property, um, they took them out unbeknownst to us. They didn't put forms in there, they put grading in there. Uh, we had sidewalks on the steps to keep the dirt from piling out from underneath the steps. They threw steps in there, they looked nice, but five to seven years from now, the dirt's gonna, it's already leaking. With the rain we had this fall, we got a mud flow coming in, those steps are gonna collapse. So, and that's on our property. And I have no information at all as far as redressing some of these grievances about damage.
Okay. Michael, there isn't really anything we can do tonight, but I do, uh, I'll, I'll follow up on this myself and, uh,
I appreciate it because, you know, it's, communication was a problem on Washington Street. We have a, uh, our water block, or, you know, the turnoff for the water. It came up in the middle of the sidewalk. When they put it in, I said they're gonna expand the sidewalk. And I was more or less told back off man, we're professionals, you know, don't tell us where to put it. And then it came up in the middle of the sidewalk. I talked to Lauren about it, she said, yep, it's the middle of the sidewalk. We're gonna tell the concrete guys, put insulation and crap around it, you know, in order to, so it can move. You know, you can raise it up or down. Lo and behold, the concrete guys came in on a Saturday morning, not telling anybody about it. Ran the sidewalk right over it. I stood over there and I said, hey, you gotta put insulation around it. And all I got back was, uh, no obelisk and glaze.
Okay, I'm gonna have to stop you there because your time is out. But as I said, I'll, I'll follow it up and I'll be in contact.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Uh, anyone else to speak on this, uh, public hearing on the special sidewalk assessments? Please come up. May I just speak, stick your name and address, please?
Lisa Sheehan.
Thank you.
Two thirty-nine State Street.
Thank you.
And the question I had, I've also talked to Lauren and Christian, who had something to do with the, the contractors. The sidewalks that were going over our driveways, they're supposed to be seven inches high, or deep, deep. And ours is only five. We took a picture of it, sent it to them. Our, the, you know, uh, then they came in and did, completed our driveway. They put a cement patch on our driveway and the apron. Christian said that, well, I measured your neighbors that we haven't touched yet, and those all measure seven inches. So my brother went out and measured just my neighbors, because he had blacktop that they hadn't done yet. And his is only five inches. We're getting, we have to pay more for that seven inches that they're supposed to put in, when they only put in five. I've got pictures of mine, and I have pictures of my neighbors. So I asked Lauren if they're gonna come out in the summer and redo that over the sidewalk. And she said, well, no, Christian said it's seven inches. It's like, we got two pic, I mean, I have the neighbors' pictures, because he said, well, I went to the neighbors, I don't know which ones. But they're only five inches, and, I mean, I got them on my cellphone. So I don't know if they want to come out and redo it, or only charge me for the five inches and not the seven.
Okay, we'll look into that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, good. Uh, anyone else to speak on the sidewalk assessments? Anyone else? Okay, thank you. Item, uh, two, resolution number twenty, I'm sorry, uh, thank you. Uh, and I will close the public hearing. Thank you. Uh, item two, um, resolution number twenty-three dash forty-eight, amendment to the final resolution authorizing public improvements and levering special assessments against benefit of property for the twenty twenty-three Janesville Street, State Street, Sterling Drive, Union Street, Washington Street, and K Court Street Improvement Project. Staff recommendation, motion to approve as presented. Looking for a motion? Start out. Amanda? And Karleen? Discussion? Questions? Amanda?
Just a procedural, if, if anybody, if anybody was gonna get a modification based on their testimony today, we can still do that if, after we pass this, right? We can amend it later, or, or? I just want to make sure, you know, what, what proving tonight isn't like a permanent thing for, for, even for the people who came before us.
There, there would still be time to amend these, um, because the first, the first, uh, payment will not be due until the next, uh, property tax bills go out. So it's gonna be a full year until these actually get billed.
Okay.
So if there was anything that came up in the interviewing time, you can still have the opportunity to amend it.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, we have a motion in a second, all those in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Pose, motion carries, thank you. Item B, real estate purchase and sale agreement with the Main Street Townhomes Dash Oregon LLC, North Point Development for a portion of the property known as two forty-nine and two sixty-seven North Main Street, in the amount of one dollar, subject to conditions and contingencies. Staff recommendation, motion to approve, approve as presented. This is, uh, uh, go ahead, Jason, do you have a motion?
Yeah, I was gonna make the motion.
All right, thank you. Amanda, second, this is, uh, I think just a paper, paperwork item that I think that we've worked through all, all the details on this, so. But any, uh, comments, uh, questions?
Sure.
Please.
I guess, uh, I'm, I'm personally a little bothered by the idea of a pharmacy and a, a drugstore in the same.
I'm sorry.
That, that, that's next.
You're, you're a little ahead there.
You're a step ahead, okay, I'm sorry.
We're still talking about the church property.
Oh, okay.
Let me be.
I see.
I have a question.
Please.
Um, I guess this is probably for Elise. Do we have any idea when they're gonna present their final design for that property?
So, um, at our January fourth planning commission meeting, um, we have a, submit for the GDP, the zoning step for that, um, has been submitted, so that's kind of in review right now. So that would be, um, before the board at your later January meeting for that. You know, it's a.
But if we wanted to see it, we'd look at the planning commission.
Yes, correct, yep, yep, it'll be out, um, just right before the end of the year.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, all those in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Pose, motion carries, thank you. Item C, ordinance number twenty-three dash fifteen, ordinance recommending chapter twelve of the Court of Ordinances, ran into the sale of prescription medication at certain license premises. Staff recommendation, motion to approve, um. Let's get a motion first, please. Jason, Amanda, Tom might have a comment.
Does she have a comment?
What? Thank you, Phil.
You bet.
Um, yeah, I guess, I'm, I probably will vote for this. Well, I should probably, but I'm probably not gonna speak in favor of it. Um, I am bothered by the idea of a pharmacy and alcohol in the same premises. Um, I guess I, one of us, a future agenda item, if we could, or I don't know if it's an agenda item or referral to a committee, but I think we, if we looked at our current ordinance, ordinance, and we went around town with it, we would find that almost everything is grandfathered in or doesn't follow the actual policy. And I guess I'd like a, a hard look at that. What other communities are doing, uh, how can we be open to businesses and yet have a, have something that, that's manageable? And I guess I'd like to see something referred to a committee or, or some kind of plan to, to research that.
Okay. Amanda.
That, that sounds like something you should bring up at the future agenda items, to maybe refer to public safety or something like that.
Any else? Okay, uh, I had spoke, uh, about my reservations about this ordinance in, uh, in terms of, uh, uh, restrictions on the point of sale, um, uh, alcohol prescriptions. However, I fully support the ordinance, uh, otherwise, so I, I will be voting in favor. Any other comments? Okay, you can reiterate if you want.
I just reiterate everything I said before.
Okay, copy from the minutes. All right, all those in favor indicate by saying aye?
I don't have a.
I'm sorry, I have.
Did you?
I have one. Tom and Amanda?
Well, somebody wasn't.
Jason and Amanda.
Oh, looks like. Oh, yeah, I see that now. All right, Jason and Amanda, I think. That's right, it's usually me, so. Uh, all those in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Close. Motion carries, thank you. Item D, vacant village trustee office appointment for the unexpired term ending twenty twenty-five. We have a, a, a process that's been laid out for us, uh, in the packet and one that we have, uh, worked with before. I just want to check my notes here quickly. Okay, so, uh, I just, I think I'll just, uh, you know, state the process and then make sure that everyone's comfortable with that. So, uh, we have, each of the applicants have, have, have presented an application and, uh, the questionnaire. We've invited them to speak for five minutes tonight, which we will be doing shortly. And, and then, um, uh, after that, we will have discussion and/or nominations from the floor. And then we will have voting by each trustee indicating which, which applicant, uh, they're choosing by name. That all sound, go ahead, Amanda, please.
So, in the past, did we ask other applicants to wait outside while?
Yes, right, yes. I'm sorry, I neglected that. So, as each, uh, person, the first will have, uh, presenters leave the room and then come in one at a time. I believe that we only have two tonight. Um, oh, let me just back up and say, everything, Amanda made a good point and thank you for that. Anything else that I'm leaving out or is not clear?
Um, my recollection on the last time we went through this process, um, we were allowed to ask questions, but it, we, we were to make an effort that the questions were relatively similar of each applicant.
You would need to ask the same, uh, exact question, I, in, in my opinion.
We didn't ask questions. That's why we put the questionnaire out.
Yeah.
I, 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 I will say, I think if it was a matter of clarification of a statement, we allowed it. Um, but not additional, for additional information, if I'm remembering correctly.
I think you're correct. That was the reason for the questionnaire, so that we didn't ask different questions of different people.
Yeah, all right. Okay. So, we're good. Um, I'm gonna take the, uh, applicants in the order listed on the agenda. So, uh, Tim would be first and, and, uh, is Mr. Wunsch here?
He's the one that, um, said in his.
Okay, that's right. And Cole Vacaro, uh, let us know late in, in the evening that, or late in the afternoon, and he's unable to attend. So, that leaves Erin. So, uh, Erin, if you could just maybe step out on the hall or, you know, grab a soda? Thank you. And, uh, Tim, Higgins, please. Uh, you'd have, uh, five minutes, Tim.
Thank you. Tim Higgins, uh, live at one oh nine Prairie Grass Road in the village. I am a small business owner, the business, uh, based in my home here in the community, serving seniors and the disabled. I've done quite a bit of volunteering, uh, in the village and in the Dean County area. Um, I've served on a couple of committees here in the village for the last six, seven months. I attend these meetings very regularly and, uh, often have had thoughts, wish that I could interject. Um, I've managed to, uh, bite my tongue. Um, but I do think I have some things to contribute to the conversation. I do think I would be effective in doing so. Um, Tom, you had raised a question about collaboration. I work collaboratively in my business all the time. Most of my clients have a whole care team around them, case managers, nurses, family members, um, et cetera, and we often have to sort of navigate what's best for the client. And, um, I'm good at advocating my position without dominating the conversation and, um, allowing others to speak and trying to find resolution. As I said, uh, I think I have some things to offer the village board and, um, I'd be interested in your vote. Thanks.
Thank you, Tim. Yeah, let's see, someone wanna? Thanks, Tim. You're a utility man, Tim. Thank you, Tim. Welcome, Erin. Uh, you'd have, uh, five minutes, please. Up two.
Well, good evening, um, village board members, fellow applicants, uh, and residents, and our dedicated village staff. My name is Erin Zitzelberger. I live at seven zero nine Foxfield Road here in Oregon with my wife Sarah, who is an oncology nurse at UW Health, my son Jack, who's ten and at RCI, and my other son Grant, who's eight and a student at Prairie View Elementary. We lived here in Oregon for approximately five years now. Uh, I'm a nearly lifelong resident of Wisconsin. I did my bachelor's degree at UW Madison, my law degree at William Mitchell College of Law in the Twin Cities. And I currently work at the Wisconsin Economic Development Corporation as the Senior Director of Global Trade and Investment. I help companies, uh, expand by helping them execute a strategy to export their products internationally. Additionally, my team helps companies from around the country and internationally locate in Wisconsin. So, economic development is something that is very important to me, also very, uh, and it's also something, incidentally, obviously, that is very crucial to Wisconsin municipalities. I stand before you today with a deep sense of commitment and purpose as I express my desire to join the Oregon Village Board. Our community is the heartbeat of our lives, and I'm driven by a passion to contribute and make a, a positive impact on its future. Uh, as a resident who cherishes the values of our community, I believe that the village board member should be dedicated, should be a dedicated advocate for the well-being of all residents. I envision a village where every voice is heard, where diverse perspectives come together to shape policies that reflect the needs and aspirations of our residents and to craft effective solutions for the complex problems before us that will in turn better the lives of our citizens. Our village board must continue to be prepared to tackle a variety of major issues, from village debt to stresses on infrastructure, to public safety, and many, many others. Each board member must be prepared to dig in and work to build consensus and find solutions. I believe, and that's what I am here to do, and I believe every single applicant, um, that has applied for this, um, is prepared to do that. So, let me extend my gratitude to all the applicants as well for their willingness to submit their applications and work as, and work as public servants. I believe any decision the board makes this evening is going to be a good one. Uh, my work in public service and experience in economic development has equipped me with the skills to navigate the complexities of issues before the board, collaborate with diverse stakeholders, and find innovative solutions to challenges that our village faces. I'm committed to fostering transparency, open communication, and ensure that residents are well-informed and engaged in decision-making processes that help shape our community. I'm dedicated to promoting responsible growth that balances the preservation of our community's character with the need for progress, affordable housing, and other key essential needs. It's crucial that we continue to invest in essential services, infrastructure, and programs that enhance the quality of life for our residents. But understand that priorities must be set, hard choices must be made to minimize the impact on taxpayers at a time when inflation has hit hard, people hard, increased property taxes, light taxes, wheel taxes, and other increases in expenses continue to make things difficult for people. We owe it to our citizens to make every effort to reduce spending before looking to increase, uh, taxes and costs for services. Finally, I'm eager to work with all of you towards initiatives that bring our community together and create opportunities for meaningful connections and collaboration. A strong community is built on shared values, and I am committed to upholding the principles that make our village a place that we can all be proud to call home. Uh, I'm taking an opportunity to serve and contribute and to be a catalyst for positive change. Together, I look forward to working towards, uh, the future where our community thrives. So, thank you very much for all you do, uh, and thank you for your consideration, and happy holidays.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I would just, uh, mention for, to clarify that, uh, that, uh, Mr. Wunsch and, and Mr. Vacaro were not here, but their information was included in the packet, including their application and their answers to the questions. Okay, thank you. Okay, so, we have, we have, uh, applicants in, in front of us. Um, next we will look at discussion and/or nominations from the floor.
Phil, can I make one comment real please? Just a point of suggestion. You guys are free to do this however you choose, but I think one way that we would be helpful to start is just, again, discussion and then get all the nominations on the floor. So, anybody that the board is willing to consider for the conversation. And then you have a little bit of choice about how you wanna go about the actual voting on it. And it could be, I think, as you Phil suggested, maybe that, um, each board member identifies which candidate that they would see. And then, of course, the winner in that case would be whoever has the most votes. Another tactic you can take is to simply propose, uh, to make a motion, um, to, uh, approve one person. And then the board would collectively vote on that one person. There's advantages and disadvantages to both, right? Because one, in the latter one, if you, uh, for example, if you were to vote on Tim right away, and the majority of the board might feel that Tim is a, is a reasonable candidate, it doesn't give the other members of the board an opportunity to vote on some of the other candidates for that position as well. So, I just want you to give some thought as to how you actually wanna go about the process for actually taking the vote on it.
Uh, well, um, I'm attribute that as to mean is that you think the better, the better way to proceed is with, uh, motions, seconds, votes? Is that inaccurate?
As far as individual candidates, you mean?
Yes.
I think that, again, I think that there are advantages and disadvantages to doing it. It depends if there's kind of a clear consensus from the board about what you wanna do. But so, for example, if you were going to take a roll call and, and each trustee was going to identify which person would be their first choice candidate, and the winner could be, um, who has the most votes at the end of that. That's one way you could do it.
And the other process is to not have nominations, but just go straight to motions?
You, I would, I would still do nominations, 'cause, I mean, you may well, the board may well choose to have all four, uh, nominees be considered. Then again, only two of them may, you know, depending on who's being nominated, 'cause at least it, it serves as one way to sort of winnow down the field a little bit in terms of who is the board considering for this position. And it may be all four, and it may be just two of them, but you can go about that process.
Okay.
Phil, question?
Please.
Um, so, just to be clear, um, as soon as we're concluded with this vote, um, the person who is elected, if they are here, is then welcome to come and, uh, sit on the board, if I'm reading, if I've read that correctly, is that correct?
Well, uh, past practice, uh, at least last time, we waited till the next meeting.
They, they have to take their oath of office first.
Okay.
They are officially, I mean, they're...
They're officially on the board?
Board.
Elect at that point, but they just need to complete their oath at that point.
Okay, thank you.
I think in addition to is, there may be things on the agenda that, that were covered in the packet, and they, it was sitting here early, not have any idea. Probably not fair. Carly.
I was thinking, if we're gonna be consistent with the way we chose Tom and Lynn, we went down the line and named the person that we were thinking about if we wanna be consistent with what we did last time. But that...
Well, what we did last time was, uh...
We put all the nominations on the floor.
Yeah.
And then we, I just roll called, and then people...
She roll called.
Okay, got it. Told me who they wanted.
Yeah.
Got it, okay.
So, uh, go ahead, Lynn, looks like you have a question.
I guess I, maybe this is what you're talking about. Maybe we're just getting confused. But I remember that there was like a nomination of a person.
Right.
And each board member had voted yes or no for that person.
You are absolutely correct.
Okay.
We did that for the first person. And then, uh, Mr. Dregney
Suggested.
Suggested that we do it a different way. Which was, which was a much better way, 'cause, uh, unfortunately now, we've been presented with another option. So, we can either go down the, go down the line. Go down the line, Candy calls a roll, you speak, you say the name that you want. Or, and this is after nominations. Or we do nominations, and then you can make a motion to approve. I, I think we should do the, I prefer the roll call method when I'm done. Um, but I'm certainly willing to consider the other if somebody wants to do that. Okay.
And Phil, one point of clarification.
Oh, boy. Please. Oh, boy. Okay. Uh, so, it sounds like we'll do nominations, then Candy will call a roll. And you, uh, you know, state who you, who you want. Carly, you look like maybe you...
I'm asking, I need to ask a question.
Please.
So, like, we nominate whomever, somebody nominates somebody, and then we vote on that? Is that what you're saying?
No, no, all the names, all, all the name, nominations at once.
Until the nominations are closed.
And then nominations are closed, then when they call your name, you can, you can choose one of those nominated. Right? Okay, Amanda?
So, do nominations require a second? No? Just, we can just nominate somebody and they're considered. You don't need somebody else to say, I second that.
Again, there's not, there's not a lot of direction on this. This is kind of how, how the board wants to proceed with it. What do you think is a fair and reasonable process? I don't recall how we did it last time, but I know in other communities, they've, they've done it where it's just Amanda has a nominee. She, you put a nominee on the floor. It doesn't need to be seconded. You can choose to have seconds if you want to.
Do you comment on your nomination?
Um, I think after the nominations, I think then we could probably welcome comments. How does that sound? Okay, Lynn, you have?
I just wanted to make a general comment before we start nominations and all of this exciting voting. Um, because this was said in the spring, uh, during our, our nomination process. And I think it holds very true that if you are interested and, um, you know, wanna be a part of, of local government, there is always a spot available in one way, shape, or form. I know the Transportation Committee is still looking for members. DEI is still looking for members.
Public art.
Public Arts is still looking for members. And so, uh, this doesn't need to be the end of the road for anyone, anyone who's watching and interested in this process. Wanting to be a part of change is, um, open and available in a lot of different avenues as well.
Thank you, Lynn. And I would add to that, and that's a very good point. I think most of the people sitting here were on a committee or something, one or other, before they got on the board. As, uh, my recollections, many passport numbers started out on committees. But, um, so, uh, other questions or comments? And then I will reiterate the process so we're, so Derek can give me another idea. Okay, so, we will, first we'll have nominations. They will not require seconds. Go ahead, you have a question, Jason?
No, I, I'm ready for a nomination.
Oh, no, I wanna reiterate.
Oh, sorry, I'm jumping the gun.
Um, so, we'll have the nominations, then there can be comments on the nominations. So we'll have the nominations, then there can be comments on the nominations. Positive comments, obviously. And then, and then Candy will call the roll. The first person to receive four votes will be the new trustee. All good?
Okay.
Okay, so we'll take nominations, you record these.
I'm, I'm ready.
Okay, Jason?
I nominate Tim Higgins.
Okay. Further nominations? Further nominations? Any none? Probably no discussion, I bet. Okay, please, please.
So I just want to say that Tim was one of the people who applied in the spring. It was a very tough choice for me in particular, and I, I won't go into that. But since then, Tim has been at almost every meeting. He serves on the DEI Committee, serves on the Transportation Committee, and that's going to make even bigger gaps on those committees. But that being said, I've served with him on DEI and know that he's very participatory and open, and appreciate that Tim has applied again to be on the board.
Anyone else? Okay, we will have Candy call a roll, because I think we need to have it official, probably.
You can also just do a motion if there's only one motion.
Call the roll. Let's not change the rules again.
Kirchdorfer.
Tim Higgins.
McDaniel.
Tim Higgins.
Beshin.
Tim Higgins.
Peterson.
Tim Higgins.
Van Campen.
Tim Higgins, sounds unanimous, congratulations.
Oh, wait a minute, Maki.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thought it was last. All right, go ahead.
Tim Higgins.
Okay, sorry, I had a rain on your vote there. Congratulations, Tim, and thank you for applying, Erin, and others that are not here. And thank you all for sitting through our rather convoluted process. But thank you. That's my second time doing that, and I, I'm going to try and get it right on a third, so.
Oh, write it down for next time.
Write it down for next time.
Can I, before we move off the agenda item technically, I don't know if, I, I just want to point out that because Tim is on transportation, he's on DEI, these other committees, is it possible, and I guess I'm asking if he'd be willing to continue serving as a, as a citizen, not necessarily as a board member, on those committees until we can appoint somebody else? Because transportation only has four members, and if he's now a board member, and then he's off transportation unless we say he just serves in the interim so we can have a meeting until we can find somebody else? I'm just concerned about how this would work.
I'm, I'm not sure we can discuss this under this agenda item.
Maybe that's a future agenda item?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, I'll, I'll save it till then, that's fine.
Okay. Good points, though. Not a bad idea. Okay. Over with that. Item 21, new business items for discussion or possible action. A Resolution Number 23-51, Village of Oregon Opposition to Propose Growth Limiting Legislation, Senate Bill 691, and Assembly Bill 2768 regarding urban town designations. Staff recommendation most to approve as presented. Can we get a motion, please? Amanda, Carleen, and Amanda, and I think Carleen, maybe she might have, did you want to speak on it?
Yeah, I noticed this in the League of Municipalities newsletter, and some of the, this could cause a major financial hardship for the village. Were, were we forced to provide services for towns of over 5,000 who solicited us to do that? My understanding is it came out of a dispute with some towns in the city of Eau Claire, and, but it has the potential to impact small municipalities like ours all over the state, and I think that we should follow the League of Municipalities' lead on this and oppose it strongly.
Comment from staff or attorneys?
No. I agree with trustee Beshin.
Yeah, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, I think we have.
We have motion.
Yes, thank you, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries.
Yeah, you bet.
Thank you.
All right, and let's see, item 22 is reports of village officers, department heads, and consultants. This is informational only. 22A is the Village Administrator Report. Any, anything to add or change on that? All good?
Nope, unless there's any questions.
Anybody have questions? Okay, then we'll move on. 22B, the Finance Director Report, Building Permit Fees, Impact Fees, and Connection Fees Collected Ending November 2023. Are there any comments or questions on that? Oh, Lisa, go ahead.
I just want to say after the last meeting, when you asked me the question about, there was a lot of value there, so I took that out, and I just put some notes on here talking about the concession stand that was at it, which is not taxable development, and then the library, which is not taxable either.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? All right, so 22C is the Police Chief Report, Department Recruitment Information and Notice of Charges to the Oregon Police Department Use of Force Policy Related to TASER Model Changes. Anything to, you want to add?
As far as the recruitment brochure, that was created, we did a, a lot of just evidence-based research to see where we're pulling, why we're pulling people in to apply, but not only to apply, to stay. And then what we did is we just kind of, like a snowball, built a nice big snowball of information, and hopefully it will attract a variety of individuals out there looking for this job. It goes from what our community is, who we are as a police department, our pay, some of the benefits, and then just other reasons we were given as to why people were specifically interested about the Oregon Police Department. As far as the use of force policy revisions, I, I'm happy to answer any questions. The TASER 7, so TASER is made by Axon, the company that also handles our body worn cameras. They hands down are the best in the industry, and they are continuously looking for ways to improve. TASER 7 is actually a little bit older already, they've now moved to TASER 10. But TASER 7 is what I'm comfortable with us moving to. We did have to make some policy revisions. It is a much better device, device than we were using. The staff is very excited about it. It's going to help overcome some unique situations where tasers aren't as effective. But I, I'm happy to answer any questions about either one of those.
Questions for the chief? Lynn?
I don't have a question, just a comment. I think this is kind of the first one of these in this new style that we had agreed upon, unless I missed one. But I like it a lot. I just wanted to say, I feel like you've provided a good amount of information. I liked being able to look at the policy directly, understand how much hours of training went in. That's really useful, so I just appreciate the level of information provided for that.
Thank you, and I can't thank the board enough for allowing us to pivot to this sort of approach. I have about a four to five-inch-thick stack of policies coming your way in the next two months, so some of them are, a lot of changes, some are very minimal, but yeah, there's more to come.
Come ahead.
I have a question, I have a question about the, the brochure. Is, is it interact, an interactive online piece? And can you track how oft, if it is, can you track how often it's actually being accessed?
I, I don't think so. We don't, this, this is free, the CANVA.
Oh, right.
We, we upgraded to a minimal fee now. But if we start looking at that, it's actually pretty significant cost.
So I'm going to make a suggestion that you have, use a Bitly link that takes you to the CANVA, and then you can track using the Bitly link, and then you'll know how often it's being accessed and where it's being accessed. I think it also, it may be a paid account to, to know where it's being accessed from, but you can, you know, get, get a sense of how often.
Okay, anyone else? Thank you, chief. Item D, Director of Public Works Report, light trailer update. Jeff probably has something to say about.
No, it's just, I just, every once in a while, you know, we really do, just keep talking about the equipment that they have, that, that is at their disposal, and how nice it is when, when you're given the right equipment for the right projects. And this is just something that we, we didn't have on our radar a couple of years ago, and we had a December 24th midnight, had a replacement. I drove by, and everyone was working in the dark, and it was just one of those things where it really showed me it was not as necessarily a safe environment. So we asked for a light trailer, and, and the village board approved that. So this was a water main break on Netherwood. If you drive down Netherwood, wonder what that little patch is in the middle of nowhere. Middle of the night, this comment I got back from staff and from Nick, were just how nice it was, just easy to put out, and something we could use for that. But we also use it for other things, for events. I think it was out at the, the caroling and chili feed for the fire department a couple weeks ago, and we also have it ready to go for the police if there's a incident, seeing that they need lit up at night, or a fire department. So it's just kind of a thank you. It's always nice to, hopefully you see that the equipment is taken care of and used and appreciated.
Questions, comments for Jeff? Thank you, Jeff.
Yep, you're welcome, thank you.
Item 23, announcements and miscellaneous business. Announcements, comments, communications, upcoming meetings and events, and miscellaneous business. Village Board members may provide brief statements, but no discussion or action of the body shall occur. Let's have the Village Board brief statements first. Carleen?
So there's the announcement about the public library ribbon cutting in, in the packet, and I, I'm the secretary in the library board, and I got to go in today.
All right.
Really exciting, it's really beautiful, so I really encourage folks to attend that ribbon cutting on January 4th. I think it'll be fabulous.
Thank you. Anyone else? Jason?
As I mentioned before, and I'm going to mention it twice because I haven't said it before, Public Art Committee is in need of more members. We're currently working on the Public Art Fair. It's going to be the second one. That's going to take place in, I believe, the second Saturday of June. So group's doing some good work. You can, if you look at the utility boxes around the village and see the wrappings on them to make them something nicer than just green, that's some of their work, along with the sculptures around town. So if you're interested in that type of thing, we'd love, love your work.
Anyone else? Okay. Going through these, item one, Public Information Meeting for the 2024 South Main Street Reconstruction Project from State Street to South Perry Parkway is set for Tuesday, December 19th at 5:00 PM in the Village Hall Community Room. Item two, Final Decision Letter from the U.S. Post Office Regarding Plan Relocation to 102 Alpine Parkway. So we received notification that they are going to build a post office there right across the street. Item three, Amanda, did you have something?
I was just, so their lease is up when?
Uh, June 30th, I believe. End of June.
Okay.
Sure, we'll give them an extension.
Well, we, we have, we have extender clauses in there that start to really ratchet up the, the rent, kind of.
No, they have money.
As an incentive.
They have money.
Yes, they're going to pay us in stamps. We'll, we'll work with them, obviously, and, and, yeah, I mean, but. We want to keep them moving.
Thank you, Jeff, and Amanda. Okay, item three, just a reminder, Carleen outlined, Oregon Public Library Grand Opening, January 4th at 4:00 PM. Item four, Village Board Meetings for January rescheduled to January 8th and January 22nd due to New Year's Day and Martin Luther King Day holidays. Item B, Future Agenda Items. Tom?
As I mentioned earlier, and I don't know where to make this referral to, but I'd like to see that we spend, look at the ordinance in relationship to our liquor licenses, get some, draw some comparisons as to what other communities are doing in the area. I'd like to have one that, that applies to all of our businesses that have liquor licenses in our, in Oregon, and that, that would encourage business growth within our community as well, so.
Was there anyone to object or question on that?
I have a question on that. Are you asking this board to do that, or the Public Safety Committee to do that? Where?
Yeah, I guess it'd probably be a referral to the, a committee, and I guess I would leave it to the chair to determine which committee to assign it to.
Well, I would look down the line and say that it sounds like Public Safety.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If it's alcohol licensing related, it would be Public Safety Committee.
And, Tom, did Tom give me enough information to know, give you a direction on how to proceed with that?
Yes.
Yeah, and it can always check. Okay, everyone's all right with that? Anyone else? Amanda?
Yeah, so I just want to put on the agenda, discussing how with Tim now being on the board, we're going to handle the committees he's currently on as a citizen, and then they assume that you have, we have to appoint him to official committees later, but what is that going to look like, and how can we keep our committees fully staffed or whatever?
No, partially, partially, so we have quorum.
Yes, quorum, at quorum or better.
It's all right with everyone?
Yeah.
Okay. Please.
So currently, the DEI Committee does not have a meeting date in January because our regular date conflicts with the grand opening. We're looking for another date right now, so just if anybody who plans to come, just look for that notice to come out, because we're, we're trying to find a date when we can all meet.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, item 24, adjournment. Jason, Carleen, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those, motion carries, we are adjourned, thank you all very much.